Let's start with the phone call.
Dr. Campbell, Superintendent.
Danny Peterson.
Claire.
Claire Wilson.
Jeffrey McAnally. Dr. Campbell, will you read us on the pledge, please?
Yes. I'm just using it around the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening is to go over the 2015-16 Annual Agenda Planning Schedule. We've had quite a bit of input into this. Tonight, what we'll do is we'll go through three things. This, along with the executive limitations for the first piece, and the end. There's no approval tonight, it's just additional discussions to make sure that we have everything ready to go for approval at our meeting on the heat. So if we can review the board's schedule. If you have any questions, concerns, comments.
I would just add, we're really working to maintain those due dates so that we get the previewing that happens at our Friday Board Presidents' Meeting, so that then, any questions that the board members have, we can ask ahead. So we're really working on that.
The only addition I would say, too, is as we, once we adopt this, and if this is our calendar that kind of goes out, that we make sure that we articulate when it says "Ends One," that what "Ends One" is, so that if someone's not familiar, that they'll know the content, just...
So once we just, we vote...
I mean, we don't have to do it now, but once we've figured out what our "ends" are, and whatever, it'd just be a way to continually tie back to how governance supports...
To clearly outline what they are, not just name them, but list...
Right, right, because people are like, "Hens," you know, so...
That's a very good point. I think that's well said.
And especially, you know, internally, hopefully, we would know, but if this is going to be a way to communicate, it would be good to have it.
Okay.
Now, one other thing I see, that I would like us to talk about, it works only on the 15th, is for us to begin to look at a board rubric, right? It's not, I think we need to create a shell. Everybody else has a rubric. We're looking at it from a teacher, to a principal, to a central office, to a superintendent. I just think it would be a good idea for us to begin to build that rubric, not that we're going to have it all done on the 15th, but just to begin to look at that and see how that looks.
Okay. So maybe even just for the purpose of self-assessment?
Self-assessment, right. The whole self-assessment piece, board self-assessment.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it would be our board self-assessment. It would be whatever tool we designed, and I think in the past, we did that, but we also had our meeting, board meeting assessments that have gone away. Those were those individual sheets, but...
Because prior to you coming, Dr. Campbell, we actually had every board meeting with a lot of sheets, and where it is, right?
Oh, I think I heard you talking about that.
But then, I just went in the file, we did nothing.
Got it.
So...
Okay.
But that was really a meeting assessment, not an assessment of our...
Yearly board.
Yeah.
So when I share the sample that could be used for me, you think you would have, you want to maybe have something that the board could possibly...
Yeah, I have something from WASDA. WASDA does board self-assessment, but it's not policy governance-aligned. So they sent me something, and I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, and I think there's a couple others. So I just want us to review and begin to think about how that looks, right? Not that we'll completely formalize it, but just, until we get through our GPs and do the same thing we're doing with the first set of ELs...
What's your hope for it? I guess my, I get the whole idea for rubrics and stuff, but what is the application? I think that's what's the issue of the past, is you can do the activity of it, but what is it really...
Giving us?
What is it giving us, and who is deciding what it's giving? You know, that, because that was the thing, is, you know, before, it just kind of went in the file, and it was supposed to be something like the President kind of took as a hint of how leadership was going for that meeting, or those kinds of things, or how we're doing and following that. I just, I just look at that going, what kind of, what's, just understanding, what's, what, how do you see that kind of playing out?
Well, my help is, right, so I see that we held ourselves accountable. If we're going to expect everybody else to be accountable, all the way down the line, we have to set that expectation, and we have to lead with that. So my help is, if we're going to look at everybody else and evaluate everybody else against a rubric, we, as a board, have to evaluate ourselves as well, that we begin to look at that, right? And that's what I'm saying, is it's, it feels kind of awkward, and I've not done board self-assessment. Two years in, I haven't done it. So I want us to start creating something that we truly begin to look at self-assessment, and for us to be really transparent and evaluate ourselves on where it is.
I'll tell you the other piece about that, too, Danny, is that at every level, you need accountability and support. So if a principal is going to do their work, they need to be accountable, and they look at a rubric to figure it out, and they need support. The support typically comes from their supervisor. So then, they, they have a rubric where they describe their performance, and ultimately, if they're performing in a proficient or distinguished range, they're providing support for the person below them. As a superintendent, I'm going to be held accountable, but I need support. So that rubric should actually outline the kinds of things that boards do that are supportive, that are, hold you accountable, and align to what you're expecting me to do, because I'm not operating outside of myself. I'd offer that, that it's the way to ensure you're functioning in a, in a way that is, in fact, supportive of the larger goals of the district.
And, no, and I was thinking that, you know, our past experience has been around our meeting self-assessments, and so those really were documents that were just around, you know, really, if you looked at them, did we, you know, did we have even participation? Was there an agenda tied? Did we, were we at a policy level? And we did those every board meeting. That was kind of the self-assessment. And I think what we're talking about is kind of moving into thinking about if we were a board of distinction, or if we were looking at what a board of distinction might look like. One of the things that board of distinctions do is, it's a quality, you know, it's a, it's a continuous quality improvement piece, and so, and I think that also comes along, it's that whole professional learning piece, where we also don't have depth of knowledge or experience on this board, and so I think, but I wouldn't say that we've not done assessment before. I think we have to, again, be very careful about our words, and what we may be wanting to do is to create a rubric, which is now the language and the way that all other assessments are happening, to align ourselves, but I wouldn't say we've not done that before, I think. But again, we have to think about to what end, and to meet to what end, is to hold ourselves accountable, to following policy governance, to meeting, using data to meet, you know, I mean, those kinds of things, it would be continuous quality improvement.
And that support piece, yeah. That's, that's my help. And I, so to take it back, I'm just saying, we haven't walked through a formalized, I think we've looked at it, but that's all I'm saying, we haven't, to that piece.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, I know that there, there's other, we don't just have to recreate the wheel.
It's already probably...
You know, I, for me, I think as a board, though, it's just more, it's also to our, at least with the last, the assessment stuff, was whether or not we were involved in policy. And where I felt like that failed, though, is that regardless of however you address that, going, "We're not really staying with the board calendar," or, "No, we, this or that," there was no change. And so, I don't know, for me, I could still see, we could create a new rubric, I mean, call it whatever you want, you know, call it form rubric, I mean, that's just the, you know, that's the educational word right now. But it's, I just want, if it's a self thing done, then how, with all the other things we have on our plate, how does that actually get done? I mean, we know how it's difficult, just even with this last summer, I mean, do you envision it happening in the summertime? Do you envision it happening every meeting?
At the same time, we do, I kind of see it where we've talked about in Dr. Campbell's contract, that we evaluate twice. The first evaluation is on ends, and the second one is, still kind of looking at that rubric overall. And that, once we do that, that at the end of the cycle, you know, and I don't have the exact date, is that July, is it August, is it June? But that is, through our end of a cycle, we really do go September to August, that we've stopped to take time, to take and dip in, to talk about, let's look at this last year.
I want to give you the difference, too, between what I sounds like you had, which is a checklist that you assessed yourself against, and the difference between that and a rubric. When you do, what a rubric does, it tells you what it should look like, and you self, you self-assess. When you do a checklist, you just say you did or you didn't. It doesn't tell you what it looks like, and sometimes a rubric teaches. So the reach, the rubric is a teaching tool versus saying yes or no. That's the difference. And to me, it would be something where, so for example, when we do rubrics internally, Danny, everybody would have it, and before you come to maybe a board meeting, you could highlight and self-assess individually, and what the board would think. You'd come in with those things highlighted, and you'd talk about it, and maybe you say as a board, "We have one goal that we want to work on collectively in this area on the rubric." And every time after a meeting, or maybe you do it quarterly, "Let's self-assess and see how we're doing, and what will we count as evidence of how we've done?" And that doesn't take a lot of work from you, it's really just conversation and being very intentional about the language of the rubric versus yes or no. Because the rubric will say, "Proficient boards do this, this, and this," and you can't really make it up if you're not doing it.
But that's, that would be in our, that's in our policy, though, it's not where this other...
But it's a tieback, right? So there's, it's just like an evaluation. It's, we have, I mean, I think, I can all kind of tie it back to work. My work, I have, I just went through a mid-year evaluation of everything. Where is it, and am I on track or not? Twelve different areas. My boss sat down, and we talked about every single one of them, we went through, I'm completely on track, I accept it, and move on. So I know at the mid-year point, and I think quarterly is probably a good idea, that we, and not all of it, right? Where's our weakest area? Where do we, as a board, decide we want to focus? And we do that, and then we assess that. But to begin, begin to create that, to make sure we stay at the policy governance level, that we're truly supporting the superintendent to be the most successful, and that it's impacting students, I just think that that's, that's my hope out of it.
It would be also kind of a report card to our stakeholders and to our owners.
That's a very good point, Claire.
As a way, because we've not really been able to, other than articulating and putting our, having our conversations and our posts up, it would be a way of really showing, I mean, I just think the value of really being held accountable to our work and to our owners. I think we've got that.
But I guess that's, that's the flop, is it's, we are elected to hold the superintendent accountable in the District Accountability Board. That's, that's our role.
Right, and as a board, I want to make sure we're doing our job.
But we are to kind of self-assess ourselves, to go, well, we gave ourselves an A. I, I don't think that's what we're, I don't think that's what we're trying to do. I'm just, I'm giving the example of that, I'm not saying that's what we're trying to do.
Right.
Obviously, you know, there's people in the community that have a different view of what, whether or not I feel like you're doing what I want you to do or not what you do.
But this helps you, because now it's not left up to them. You have an objective tool that says, "Here's what boards do when they hold the superintendent accountable."
And people can tell you you're not doing something if you've not shown them what you are doing. We've never, never publicly, other than, you know, if you look at our policy governance, it doesn't have anything up there, it's got a trademark, doesn't say anything about who we are, what we, as a board, have taken on, what our commitment is.
It could teach the public what it is you're supposed to be doing.
I mean, it's a way of communicating action, and the fact is that, or movement or not, I mean, we, if we put it out there, it means we got to do something with it. If we don't ever show it to anybody, it really doesn't matter, and to me, it's just a way of, and it's alignment, and, and I think that...
But Claire, imagine a community member who says, "I wanted you to do this," and you go, "I want you to go and look at our, our rubric that talks about what, what boards do when they're operating." That's a teaching tool.
Well, I wouldn't, but I wouldn't do that. I would go back to what are our ends, what are our, and that, our actions line up with our ends, and also lines up with our, our policies, you know? Why didn't you do this? Because this is the extent of what we do as a board, and this is superintendent role, and those types of things as well. I wouldn't go to a rubric for that. I think for us, what I, what I see the value of a rubric is not this community piece that everybody goes, "Well, they're grading themselves, isn't that wonderful?" I see that as, is it really, and for me, it's not about just going through the motions, is there really a way to find something that will correct something if it's wrong? Or is it basically just a way of going, "Yeah, we're following our policy, and yeah, we're doing that?" And that's where, I'm, I'm just curious to see, and so...
Have you ever been evaluated on a rubric, on a scale, or on a sliding scale, where you measure your progress, and it's not about, you never reach your end, that there's always the next step? And I guess, to me, that's a rubric, and you strive to be beyond provision and...
Here's my point, I think, and this is, and I'll wrap it up. We're in a learning organization, you're expecting everyone else to learn and grow, the board should be doing that, too. If you're going to set that tone, every single level, they're doing it, and if the board somehow says, "Well, we don't have to learn and grow," are we modeling what we want every group in the organization to do?
No, that's not what the board's saying, and...
That's why I think it's important, though.
Yeah, well, and I, I think that's just, that's, that's trying to focus on some, I don't think necessarily just the community message that people are going to get. What I have seen done for rubrics, and I don't necessarily think it would be valuable either, is there's some districts that make, that's part of, for policy governance, or even just, they're not even that, they just do it, it's based on how the, the president does for that year, and their leadership.
That would just, right, it's all of us, it's not one, it's all.
Well, and that's, that's what I'm saying, and I don't want to do that, and I've seen...
And again, that's about the meeting, because that's what the charge of the president is.
Well, it's not necessarily the meeting, the president's also about operating within the policies and carrying out the agenda that we're talking about right here. I mean, that's, and that's just part, that's what, that's the role you have, you know, it's just going, "This is what we decide as a board, and we make sure that we're, you know, in order, and we're not going on tangents and that." But I don't see that as helpful either. So for me, if there's a way, a rubric or something out there that would be beneficial, that we could look at and go, "Actually, this might help us with getting better or staying on," I think that'd be fantastic. I just would question then, when would we actually, actually do that work?
So I think it's, and that, so that's part of what I want to do, is we begin to look at Tammy's, that we also look at ours and begin to create the foundation. We're not going to create it all that night, and I would hope that maybe we'd even consider one goal we might come up with, one area that we know, as a board, that we'd like to focus this next year on. And I, my hope is, by the time we get to a strategic plan, and we're at this point next year, we have a viable rubric with a plan on how we're going to use it. Not just create it for this year, but let's like, let's use this as our ramp-up period. There's so many things in transition, I'm not trying to add too many more things, but I just, I, I think the alignment that happens, that what is seen at the bottom, they can see it all the way to the top, and the expectation of all of us is the same.
Yeah. I'd just be curious of what WASDA has for...
They've got, yeah. And they don't have a lot on policy governance, but I also will just say, I've never, ever, as a board member, or someone who's a liaison to board, ever done anything but a total board assessment. There would be no way that I would assess a president in his or her ability to corral an amoeba in a group of people. You know, I'm saying, I mean...
But it's not, but that's not a good, the board isn't about, about, everybody does the same thing. A board is about how you represent all the people.
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, and, and our agenda building, that is the role of the president, that's what you would evaluate a president on. You would evaluate the board on their relational abilities to move through, to negotiate, to how they work with conflict, to all of those kinds of things that say we can move through something. But I guess, and, and a rubric is also, it's a, it's a conversation, so there isn't really a right or a wrong answer, it allows people to put things out on the table and have a conversation, so I don't think there's...
It allows you to know what success looks like.
Yeah, I mean, and I think we need to just create that, yeah.
Then constantly measure how you're doing relative to that target.
Yeah.
So are you okay with us adding board self-assessment to the 15th? Do you want to do that, or do you want to not? Tell me what you want to do.
I'd like, I mean, so it's...
I'd like to see a committee, maybe put a committee, bring some stuff to us, the board committee. I, I mean, we're just having another discussion, are we just going to, hopefully, we're all bringing stuff?
I don't know.
The other thing I'd like to throw out there is that if WASDA doesn't have something like this, I mean, you threw out board of distinction, and, you know, that, to me, registers with something else on how they try to honor boards that do that.
But they're changing, they've added a bunch of areas.
But, and you've also talked about, you know, in the past, and I'd also brought it up in the past, too, they have a tool to do board assessment. Is that the type of thing you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about, they have rubrics, but their rubrics are based on not our policy governance structure, so we can use it to look at, but we're going to need to...
I'm willing to bet you, there are policy governance rubrics out there.
Yeah, I know. We just haven't, I mean...
Well, it, it doesn't matter if you're policy governance or not, there should be certain practices that you're doing regardless of that.
I want to remind policy governance, because WASDA isn't.
Well, but yeah, but policy governance, that'll be a driving point in there, is it'll have to be policy.
Right, but I gave you guys, I passed out.
You did.
Okay? And that is what WASDA has about what boards, not only that, but that whole workshop I went to, with the rubric that they do have, and I tried to share that a while ago, so I would encourage you to look to see what they sent you, and then just go from there. I don't think we can do anything wrong.
So what I'd like to ask is, I want it to be held to two hours, right? So it will be the third item on the agenda, and we will bring things forward to begin to look at. We're not going to accomplish it.
Actually do it, I'm not thinking of you doing it.
We're not going to do it, no. We have to begin to look at it, and then figure out where we dip. And at that point, Danny, we may create a committee to do it, right? At that point, we may decide it, mess this, to do it, to committee, and let the committee bring something back to the board.
I don't think, I don't think the concept's bad, I just, I just look at it going, what does it look like when, in practice? And that's where I kind of question, go, "I don't know if it, in the end, if it's going to be, if it's just going to be running through the motions and whether or not..." And that's what I'm curious, I'm curious to see what that would actually look like, and how we'd actually be able to play.
I hope that we can be transparent, and that we really be honest, and we really begin to see our work, and honor the work, and find our shortcomings, and hopefully shorten them up.
But all that will be done in public anyway, so you're sitting there going, "How are we doing?" And I get, if that's just a way to have a dialogue of, of just a check-in every, you know, six months or a quarter or something.
You could do it during work study, too.
Yeah.
Where you don't have a...
Could do it there.
Because we always have lots of time, very nice.
Okay, so we'll just look exploration?
Yeah, exploration.
Of a self-board self-assessment.
And the other two are the priority, so whatever time allows, let's all begin to look at it.
Okay, all right.
Anything else on the schedule? Any other questions?
Um, do we want to add conferences and that kind of stuff to our schedule? WASDA, we want to do NSBA?
Oh, can we plug those in when we do this? Just so we know where they're at.
We have them.
Yeah, we have them, so just add them.
And I think that, that kind of falls on, not exactly with what Claire's saying, but I think this is something that people are going to refer to, like, "So what's the board's schedule?" And so if you can, that's an opportunity to go, put what ends, that when, ends is.
So we can add those.
Or if there are other opportunities, conferences, that kind of stuff that we want to, you know, participate in as a board, that's, that's us being mindful about it, yeah.
So we begin to look at professional development for the board, too.
Well, we've always had professional development, but we've only considered really WASDA and the NSBA as our, as the board decision about how they were going to spend their dollars, and so that's kind of what was put on the calendar, because that's kind of what was the public, what they knew we were doing, so, you know, for expanding professional learning, I think it is important to talk about, share that, or the why.
I'm going to say something, I want to take a risk in saying this, and I want, I hope you know that, I really think about the things before I say them. If I'm going to hold myself accountable and take the time to do that, it really does not, I don't know, it feels, it doesn't feel good to think, "Well, we can't do it at the next level." In other words, if I'm going to hold myself accountable and do all of that, I have to believe that you're going to be doing the same thing, because I'm, I'm asking...
That's not your, but that's not what we, our role isn't to, is to hold you accountable, though.
And it's to hold me accountable and support me. It's not just to hold me accountable, it's both. Just like the people that I am supervising, I have to hold them accountable and support. And I just, I just think there's a lot of work to do, and I'm going to give you everything I've got, but for that to work, we've got to do that as a team.
So you're talking the professional learning?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I agree totally, I think that people believe you can walk in and just know, and, and I think people continue to talk about how difficult and how complex. But I'm just saying, as a, as a board, the whole lens of professional learning is what I would say a new filter or a lens.
Right.
And so, because in the past, the only ones that were listed were the ones that were part of the regular schedule, and those were WASDA and NSBA. I totally am in agreement, and I think the other thing is, it gives people an opportunity to know where we're leveraging, and like, you know, I don't know a lot of things, but the district doesn't pay for those, because I have figured out how I can leverage, you know, other dollars to be able to do that. I just think those kinds of things allow us to have that kind of conversation as well, so I, I mean...
So I guess now's the time, though, as we're looking at the schedule, is, then, what is the professional development, then? Not just in theory, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing, is what is the...
Remember that chart? Did you get the chart from, that said, "Here are the offerings that we'd like to be able to..."
But on here, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so we had that, but I think the other piece, yeah, the other, so that is part of it, but I also see where we're at right now, there's two other portions of professional learning. And those professional learning pieces are Karen Friday coming back in October, December, and April. Those are three other times, that's the expense that we're doing to professional...
That we've ever done before, never had that coaching on term.
And then the other piece that I see, and I think it's part of where there's, there's some weakness right now, because we've just not figured out how to create linkage, but as we create those forums, and the forums that are going to happen with strategic planning, I believe that's also professional learning toward our community, it's linkage pieces, but there's also, so for me, that's kind of where both of those fit, and so I don't think there's anything else, along with the conferences that we've planned, for anything else this year. But if we can add those to the schedule, like when we've talked about when Karen's going to come, add the conferences to it, so we see holistically, and then the Friday, too, that we kind of look at that piece in the forum.
So the PD opportunities, adding those, and then as we even learn a little bit more about where those other linkage opportunities are, we would add those, that makes sense, we'll do it.
How about board retreat stuff? Do you want to get those, maybe not marked in the date, but the month on the schedule?
Can we not, oh, yeah, because that's, so that, actually, when we pull Karen in, because that's one of it, it's that we evaluate the summer.
Because we haven't added anymore, but we certainly can.
Right, so that's the summer that we've talked about her coming, and then doing a board retreat in August, where we come back for, for like an eight-hour period.
Because we've done it, we have done a ton of professional development this past year. I mean, how many times have we had Buzz come in and tell us the same thing? I mean, the last year and a half, I mean, it's been, we know what Buzz is going to say now. And that's great, but it's just, that's...
Yeah, I don't consider Buzz professional learning, he's the law.
No, but that's, that's, but that in a board is professional development, though. You have to create space for people to come in.
I get that, but that's a, that's an annual training every year, that doesn't necessarily change. Professional development to me is, is fill in people's buckets with, with information and with new knowledge, so they can be better equipped to create the landscape and the resources necessary for our staff in the district and everyone to be able to do their job. And I think that we can always look at legal, and that's great, but if you don't know about where the world is moving to, and, and you don't expand your own knowledge around that whole system, to me, of education, as boards, because we don't come with that oftentimes, I mean, to me, that's a, that's, that's a different piece, it's an important piece. The policy, the governance is huge, too, and we've done that, but we just haven't done this other.
See, I would, I'd totally disagree. I would say Buzz is professional development, and like, stuff like that with new board members coming on, possibly, you know, with Liz coming on and others. I don't know if we want to get that in the, in the calendar.
I think it is professional development. It's low level, but it is professional development. Teaching-
Yeah, I don't say it's not.
It's not, it's not the kind of job embedded, high-level PD, I think. But I do agree with you. I think it is. I think you're learning. It's teaching you something about your job.
So I wouldn't disagree. I mean, we, there's new laws and that kind of stuff, and that's the realm we live in as a board, is that, those realms. And that's why-
Can we just earmark somewhere in January timeframe? Liz will definitely have to do it. It's required by law to do that 45-minute training around what is the board requirements. And so let's just earmark the Public Meetings Act. There you go. Thank you. So just note somewhere in the calendar about-
Will we do, we do that with just, just to support Liz as a singleton, or do it all again?
I think we do it annually.
I think we all do it.
That's what I think, that's what I was about to say, yeah.
Exactly.
It would be annual because you would want to do it after you, whenever you had new board members, you would make your annual. And then if somebody came on after that, then-
But for me, I mean, that's the nuts and bolts of the board calendar, is it's just, you don't wait till like, oh, yeah, we're actually in January. It's like, if we get in that rhythm now of knowing that these are the things that are coming, that we get those locked in. And so, and obviously, you can always move dates, but-
Well, the good news is we have this, because I didn't have one to pick up from from last year. So I think we're making progress.
Where was last year's?
I didn't, there, well, there was a hard copy.
We probably had about 20 different versions, and I'm never sure.
I never saw one that was done.
Well, and, and there was that one, but I mean, there's even years past. You know, we had, we had the policy, policy governance, we had the board development, and you had the-
The GPs and the VAs.
And there was that.
I didn't see it.
Didn't read the kind of stuff.
So I know Chris Popovich has those all filed away, so those would probably be good reference to as well. So, you know, necessarily need to recreate everything, but those are-
Yeah, that's not in our interest either, so, yeah. Okay.
That's good.
So EL.
So are we adjusting anything to this calendar? Do we just decide?
Yeah, so I think that's what we'd ask Cassie to come, because it's just, we're going to-
I don't know. I didn't, I don't know if we decided anything.
We're adding the conference opportunities. We're adding the coaching, WASDA, NSBI.
Karen Friday, retreats, right, for October. I think she's coming October, sometime in the spring, sometime in January, July.
Wasn't a slam. I just don't know what she heard. Sometimes you say, you say what you think they heard, and they heard something different, so I don't know if she wants to tell us what she-
Cassie's been writing things down the whole time.
Do you have a question? I have conferences. I have Karen in October. She's already listed for January. I have the various retreats. I'll put in there. Buzz supported her. And then in January, doing the Public Meeting Act.
Refresh.
Refresh for 45 minutes.
Are we going to add a retreat in July or August of 2016?
So July is a, is a Karen retreat for a complete assessment of where we're at with our, our policy governance, tenately. And then August will be a board retreat, for a yearly board retreat to come together.
Okay.
So July and August?
And we want to do that July and towards the end because I'm going to want to take a vacation.
End of July, and I would say probably mid-August for the other retreat.
That's what we did last year.
So July and August, we're two retreat days.
Yep.
End of July, mid-August. Then we can, we'll evaluate, we'll look through this on Friday, if you could have that, that work.
That'd be great. Yeah, because we did all of our retreats. What we don't want to do this year is do the board retreat at the same time. We had our all-admin retreat. We had like four retreats. We killed ourselves.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Hey, so ELs. So I think we're all aware that the idea to move forward is to pump these into four areas, so EL 1, 2, 3, and 4. And it becomes sub, EL 1A, B, C, D, and E are the first ones that Karen has completed. So that's what's in the packet to kind of look at.
So what I did, she had some actual revisions. I went through and made the revisions, except, with the exception of one thing. She wanted to take staff compensation and merge it with evaluation. And I thought that was too dense. I just didn't feel like, it was just too much to put together. So the big idea, though, we were down to four ELs with all these sub ELs. I left the notes there just so we could see what, some of the things that she asked. Some of the things she was asking about things that didn't make sense, I think they may not have made sense to her because she's coming from outside of education.
So just, I get that we're, it's four ELs, but we're still 16.
Actually, I think it'll be 11 when we're done. There is some combining. But all we're doing right now is just 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 is EL 1.
But that right there would, which I'm fine with. I like how-
Yeah, but I think part of it is, yeah.
So.
But it's not going to be 16. I think once we're done, there is, in 2, 3, and 4, there will be some combining, like-
Well, there already is some combining.
I think the combining has happened now.
Yeah, so. And I, and I like how this reads it. I don't think we need to combine, I don't think 10 is a special number that has to be achieved. I think you have the ELs that you need. And if, like, that, we shouldn't combine compensation and evaluation just to try to make less, you know?
Yeah, I get it.
When I looked at them, they were, they, they had become so distinct. To merge things now felt artificial. I think what we, what I'm walking away with, though, is that when I present on EL 1, you would have a write-up maybe of two or three, and maybe I do an oral presentation on one of them. I think that's what we had talked about. The time spent in the actual board report out versus trying to go through each of these in a distinct fashion.
And I think, you know, just for me, just looking at formatting, repeating EL, 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 says that there are still under EL 1s, there's still 1, 2, 3, 6 of them. And if it's really a sub, it would be EL, it would be EL. And 1A would be expectations, 1B would be organizational continuity.
Got it. That's good.
C would be staff relations, D, yeah, I mean, I guess, to me, that would be helpful. When I read it in my brain, I go, whoa, but anyway.
And what I also did, those double asterisks are the ones that I think are the ones you take the time to actually do a report out on versus just, so all of the student-related ones. The budget planning happens anyway. When we do that budget presentation, that's automatic. And budget execution, those are the ones that I've, up in here, I say facilities program. To some degree, we're doing some of that when we do the report out, and some of the updates, and some of our projects.
I think it's a huge upgrade. So I like the formatting, you know, I liked her content she, you know, added, and some of the, you know, the simple spacings and that kind of stuff. I'm not so tripped on EL 1, EL A, EL 1B, and that stuff, but, yeah. And I, I like how that'll, but to group it, though, I think is genius, and that will really help in presenting and, and also helping direct people to kind of get to that section, yeah. And understand, you know, what, there's several things that encompass that particular piece, and I think that kind of brings some stability.
Yeah, the brain likes, likes categories.
I also would love to get a clean, a copy of, this is what it looks like. I'm still mired in the, the notes and the briefings and the questions and the consider and the bigger discussion.
I didn't want to take the notes out because everyone hadn't seen them.
No, 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 no. But when we, when I look at something, like if we're going to, like, vote on them-
You want it to be clean, perfect.
It would be helpful for me just to be able to see a very clean draft copy because I, I'll know what all the other notes were, but I kind of still get stuck looking at the, the blue. But that would be at the very end, you know, I mean, if we're saying, okay, here's what we want to vote on. That'd be great.
I just wanted to be very transparent about what she said.
And I really appreciate that.
But we will make sure that you get a clean copy.
Just my eyes are, I'm such a visual person, it just is-
It can be distracting.
Well, it is. It's kind of weird.
Is, I guess my question is, um, so 1-
See, this is like the example on the very back.
So 1A, what's, is 1?
Sorry, yeah.
So this topping up here, this wouldn't be here because this is the background, right? So this, this top-
I need, the last page is EL 1. Is that just, was that a?
I think that was what she was doing as an example.
And that will be what goes up to the top, right?
That goes at the very beginning.
That's go at the top of here before the background piece.
Right.
Now, is there any blue notes tonight that we need to discuss? For instance, on EL 1D, item number 3, what does this mean? Does it need clarification? Does that-
It, not to me, because when I sat down, I understand what it means. I just think she didn't know because maybe it was from where she's coming from with her own background of that organization.
And then the salary envelopes, the bigger discussion, that we actually already did that. And that was the question, because we had talked about, that was part of, before we had the conversation about what by law do we need to see? And she was saying, oh, no, 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 you only look at envelopes. But I mean, we, we had that conversation about what we need to do for Buzz, and then what it is that you present.
And then that's why I didn't, and I didn't pull it out because of legality.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think part of what will help clarify is that this top needs to be, here's EL 1, the background information. Oh, wait. It's, because I thought there was a heading just for the, under the human resources related.
That's where I got, they, I think she, it's a, I think she was doing something back here different.
I think she did, did it back here different.
Something's different than one. Because that is, that is EL 1A, so.
Okay.
The other one, the notes on the content, or the one on-
Which page?
EL 1B, page 4. That change, we, it was made up above, so even though it's a note, well, it says one or more, and when we talk about continuity, that was made in there. So the note stands, but the change was made, so. I think, yeah, that it's mostly just, this is what I did and what I considered.
She actually had red marking there, too. So I made the red marking, but I did not touch her notes, because I wanted to be transparent about it.
Here's another question. Regular board policy review frequency?
Where are you looking at?
Every five years.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Every five years, is that, do we want to do it every two years? I mean, think about somebody's term is four years. And so you could actually go, depending when you come in, you might have-
She, so this is not, she, this is just her doing like a mock-up?
Right.
So I don't think we should follow that. I think we should-
Well, changed every two.
From what I'm understanding is we're approving this at the next meeting, so if there's like a typo like that, we'd like it to-
Yeah, we need to fix it, yeah.
So what, what would we want it to be? Because obviously, monitoring-
We're going to review them every year, right? So this is talking about board policy review frequency. It's yearly. All of the ELs will be annual. So it's a year, do you think?
I don't see it as that, this, I think-
Oh, it's a policy review.
This is, does this policy still count?
Right, right. So I think two years is good.
Maybe we do two-year cycle. And maybe the other thing you could do is you could, you could do half and half. Like, you could split them and do, and have them on a two-year cycle.
Other, every other, or?
So that you didn't do them every, all of them every year. You did half one year, half the next, so it would be every other.
And that was what, in the, in the past, you had approval of it, but the review never really, it's kind of, it's good. And that's the thing, is you don't have to recreate it every time. It's just, I don't know. And then it's also, you need, the board needs to follow that, that every two years I should do.
So if we're doing a four-year cycle.
And put in your rubric that you did it.
Right, though, but if we follow a calendar, it actually would happen.
So EL 1 is done, it's 2016.
And we just changed the date, right?
But this one, this is-
So the policy review for this one will be next year.
There's another thinking that, um, how we should have that sheet.
Next will be the following year. So we, in a four-year cycle while you serve on the board, you're going to review all four of them.
So let's go, so slow that down. So say it one more time.
So I'm thinking, it's, it's regular board policy reviews. So the EL 1, I think we just put down what the next date will be.
Which is?
It's 2016. So here's what I'm saying.
What's that? I'm sorry.
There are going to be four ELs. And I think we just look at them like you're talking about in the cycle. So EL 1 will be 2016, EL 2 will be 17, 3 will be 18, 4 will be 19. And then we'll just start the cycle over. So once we get past 16, that'll change to 20, once we review it.
So every 16 years you get to?
Every four years. You'll be through all of them in a four-year cycle. So as Liz comes in, in her four-year cycle, she's going to, she's going to policy review them, all four of them in a, in a cycle.
Do we want to do even and odd years? Instead of trying to do 2, 2016? So in even years, we do these policies, in odd years, we do, I think that would be easier, and you're not having to update it. So in even years, when we come up-
So we would do 2 and 4 in even years.
So, so we're, we're planning when you get in August, you're sitting there going, what's our, who, what's up this year? It's all even-year policies. And so you then throw them in there.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be easier way to do it then.
There you go.
So the way that would be written, Cassie, let's look.
The thing right now is it's going to, might feel a little redundant if, in application for this.
While we're getting going, it's like the launch. Always feels like you're like-
Is what we just did it. But I don't know, just for practice, you want to go, or something else that you had in this.
So you could actually just write the EL 1, just odd years.
Yeah, you could put odd and even, just put a-
EL 1 would be the odd years. The odd years.
That EL 1's odd years?
Right.
Or 1 and 3 are odd years.
And we're going to, 3's probably not going to even be done till?
Or 1 and 2.
Wow, isn't that funny?
2, 4's not going to be done till 16.
Don't do 1 and 2 even. This one's odd.
Back till 18.
Okay.
That's a good, that's a good idea, man.
Don't you think odd should be odd?
All right, everything else good?
So the notes, so the notes will be out. We're going to put odd years for this. Maybe what we could do, just have this attached with the even odd years written on this, reviewed on this.
Then help me also with the, with the application of it. Is it, is it the 2015, 16 year? So this is the odd year?
It would be the year the school year starts.
All right, so this is the odd year. So 1 and 3 would be this year.
All things odd would add.
And then just for practicality, do you want to throw it on a consent agenda or something like that this year, just so we actually do the practice of? Or do you see this at a board meeting, work study? Do we need to do this again? Or do we say that we've done it for 2015? By us doing this work right now, we have reviewed all the policies. So next year, 2016, you're going to go through ELs 2 and 4?
Yes.
To me, this year, as we're completing our process.
For the 16, 17 cycle, we will look at 2 and 4. That's really good, because I think once we're through strategic plan, that there will probably be revisions to 2, not too much in 1, 3, and 4. But the student-focused ones, there may be revisions. And then we just do that in the next year.
Because I think what, like you're saying, by the beginning of next year, everything will be in place as far as the new, whatever we've redone and re-looked at and re-formatted and all of that. It would be awesome.
So I want to be clear. I'm understanding what we're going to put on the policy review in terms of the actual review. So are you okay still if we said EL 1, human resources related policy reviewed in odd years? Are you okay if we still do that? Just so we remember what we said?
Yeah.
Yeah, the odd number ELs are in odd year ELs.
Odd and even, uneven.
So we'll make note of that.
No one has to be brave.
Okay.
And then at our ends, I think we do it. We could be all of them, right?
Yearly.
Yeah, yearly on the ends. But then we get to the GPs, the VSRs, it's going to be the same way. So it's only half.
So annually, on the ends document, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Or on the ends. We're good on the ELs, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I'm going to make all those suggestions.
So, this is old.
I did that just-
She gave you the all just to show you.
No, no, I'm just asking, because I haven't figured, I'm like, ah!
Yeah, I wanted you to see the compare.
Okay, so this is the new, gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
And she's got monitoring frequency.
So this is the cleaned up one without all the pencil marks all over it.
Right, right.
I wrote that. That's my mark right there. Okay.
So monitoring frequency, are we going to aim to try to do monitoring of the ends twice a year? Because when I brought it up, it was like-
I think you have to really say to yourself, when do we have data available? I mean, that really is, to me, it's a discussion for us to think, when can we actually have data available? And we certainly could have, I guess, baseline data on some of this in the fall, but not everything. I don't know. I think to be safe.
Till you get to the year.
Mm-hmm, to just go with annually unless we want-
Just to annually and then once a year.
You know, and my belief is that as a student, you're going to be doing it much more frequently for that.
That's right.
Because it's mid-course correction as you look at it. But for the board, it would seem to me, a once-a-year report would be, would be what we would be looking for.
So let's look at one for real, like graduation. You're going to look at that once. You're not having multiple opportunities for that data to change. Now, on sub N 2, you could look at that more than-
Twice. And I think we probably won't. That's part of, and I, that's, you and I, Dr. Campbell, I kind of talked about, let's get through your year and see how it really fits and where it does. If we pushed everything to January, based on Karen.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. That's where you need to kind of see what the flow is going.
And what the flow is.
And you're saying, because data comes in at different times, and it may be that we look at our ends based on the availability, and when things are here and it changes the number, not the priority.
Exactly. I said that on Friday, Danny, that maybe it's-
Yeah, it's not a priority. They're not numbered by priority.
Achievement becomes EL 1 instead of 2, just because we can look at it twice.
Okay.
Possibly different twice. All right.
So Danny and I talked to Karen Friday field on Friday, and we went through, and he provided a lot of input. She also had, she shared some of the common vocabulary, common phrases that we generated, and this is the result of that. I also shared this first draft with all the board. Each individual board member has had an opportunity to see it as well.
So sub N 2, every student, it's just there's something wrong, but at every grade level, perform at or above, is the state or district standards in all disciplines, the word key doesn't?
Uh, it was key benchmarks, and so she took key benchmarks out and says, so key needs to go.
Okay, okay, just whatever they said.
She took out, she took out benchmarks. She's supposed to take out key.
And then, and number 3, we just have every student, just like the other ones, as opposed there's an S right now, right there.
Yep.
Oh, can you see?
Looking for that.
I love, though, you're right with the student focus as opposed to, you know, when Danny, when we were looking at them and Tammy was sharing about what actually are we measuring, you know, the fact that was, you're right. We did not have the student at, at those ends levels. We still had, you know, cultural competency as staff as opposed to what's the student.
It's not measurable. When I look at these, I think that the interpretation will be clean and relevant and high leverage. I think will be, we could come away with some interpretations that can tell you, when you think about some of the results I listed on the slide today, reading about third graders, graduation level, you could do surveys to some degree of students, but certainly the report card at elementary, which we get a couple times. So we could dip that twice to see what her kids are doing. So in terms of interpretations, I feel good about it. It feels like it's so clean. And it, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily held to an interpretation already, and that's what, that's what we had cleaned up.
Right. And I also think, you know, with the removal of this other end, today clearly it was evident, it didn't go anywhere. Didn't go anywhere. It's everybody, it didn't go anywhere, and so, you know, I think being able to set that stage as we keep, we kept saying that, but to set that stage and then to have the conversation or have the presentation today was clearly evident everywhere that, that.
It's not going anywhere.
It's not going anywhere, and I don't think we have.
But it's operational and it's your priority.
Well, and I think we've taken the, you know, people could just take a breath, for God's sakes, which is what we asked them to do in the first place, but, you know.
Two little move-arounds, I'll start with the bottom one first. Do you guys, do you say respect and dignity or dignity and respect? I say dignity and respect.
I agree, I would reverse those.
I don't know why I do, but it's in my head.
No, but you know what, it flows better out of your mouth than the other.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know why it flows better than it does. The other thing is, I don't know for the sake of form, we use every for all of them, for the very, the global end. Do we want to stay and say each student, do we want to say every student will graduate with the academic knowledge and 21st century skills, ready to succeed?
So it's, it's the same way.
Parallel construction.
That's the word I wanted, I just didn't say it.
So I like each better than every.
What do you, what did you think?
I like each students, because that's still.
It feels personal, doesn't it?
So if we did the ends, then would you feel comfortable saying then each student will graduate, each student at every grade level?
That actually feels more personal in an education form.
Well, it's I, me.
The other word I had there was, how about our students will. So ownership of their, our, our goal line is our students will graduate with the academic knowledge and 21st century skills.
So from an operational standpoint, each still has more power, because we used to say all, and then we said, let's move from all to each. And it means you're knowing that personal, I see what you're using, you're using our, which is a pronoun that closes the gap so that we own them. We have to decide, you have to decide which, what do you want? Do you want that individual focus, or is it, are we trying to close the relationship gap?
So here's, here's, it differentiates, but I like it to stay each in the behemoth, and I like the our down below. Now, that does bring inconsistency, because I, I like it tying back. The each is the overall, right? And that really is talking about each and every student. And then as we get into the sub, we're now owning it, and we're putting our arms around it to own it as ours.
I don't know why our loses, to me, if we lose the focus.
They don't own them, sorry, guys, they're not our students.
Our feels like when our lose.
They're not ours.
I, I would totally disagree, they're, they are the state, the state and the funding.
We don't know, we all know.
That's the ownership of the students, though, because our.
I'm sorry, if you're talking about my kid, you do not own my child.
Let's push back, though. Our students are not, are not Kent, and our students are not Auburn, our students are not Renton, our students are not Highline. Our students are, our students that come through are our program.
Our federal way public school students.
They're taught by our teachers and, and yes, it's not.
The district teachers.
But don't you want ends that are owned by educators? And I will tell you, each is a part of the lexicon of the education language, and our. What you're saying, Danny, is culturally responsive, that's the culturally responsive language, but to get to goal setting, you want each. That's just, I'm very, I'm having a strong reaction to this. I know these, you own the language of that, but each is much more powerful in terms of accountability.
To me, if you, if it's each, that means my kid won't be the one out of 20.
That's what it does.
Forgotten, and our children, I could still lose somebody.
It's like all, almost.
Yeah, I just, and I totally get it, and I love the, I love the.
So our, our becomes crayons, where each becomes puzzle pieces. Our is crayons, it's all in a box together. Each becomes the pieces that are put together.
You know them, you have to know them, you have to know them. Our, you can lose kids in our.
I could actually go either way, but I.
I like, I like, just for the record, I like our as a voting board, but I like the word our.
I'm joking.
A couple hours.
Oh, come on, I'm joking.
2,500, 6,000, whatever.
We're going to do an hour to get this done, we got four minutes.
Okay.
And I know, it's, it's beating up words, but that's what we're doing right now, is that. The other thing is that we're, there should not be a comma between responsible and citizen.
Yep.
Where is that?
Well, so let's talk about that, because we're to that point.
Well, I don't, let's talk about our, but that was, that's a quick little one. But is, are we done? I know Tammy feels, I know, I know how Tammy feels about each, I know how Claire.
And clearly you don't care.
I know.
At this point, I want each, just because I think it, for me, it's that piece of, it's very distinctive when Dr. Campbell talks about crayons and puzzle pieces, and it really aligns with me to say our is crayons, and it's not, it's not cohesive. And each signifies and it stands alone, and we will take care of each and every single student.
I guess, though, for me, though, the global end, though, is it's not about puzzle pieces because, as Claire said earlier, they're not our kids when they're done. They're our kids until we, because remember, we did graduation in June.
180 days, six hours a day, six and a half, seven hours a day.
But I put it, I put it this way, for me, the global end is what is the final product, the end that we are looking to. My, my, my second grader does not have the academic knowledge and 21st century skills, ready to succeed as a responsible citizen in a global society. She does not have that, she's each student right now, her teacher knows her name.
So you agree with me?
And all that, no, I don't, because what, what we are preparing, what our job and role is, is we're not responsible. As Claire said, we want to give kids the opportunities.
But don't you want to help me as I hold the system accountable for each?
But the system, but the system is not, what is, for me, the end goal is, when our graduates, whatever they choose to do, whatever school they choose to go to, whatever mom and dad choose to do or not do, does, is out of our hands, but those, when you get done with federal way public schools, the global end is that, one, you're going to graduate, our, our, our students are going to graduate, and they're going to, what they're going to graduate with is with academic knowledge and 21st century skills, that's just not just head knowledge, but actually helps them be, you know, a responsible citizen in a global society.
What would happen if we put in the, in the mega every, and then the sub would be each? Or if, no?
I, I just, I'm just talking about, I just, I was just talking about the whole thing with, I get puzzle pieces and that, I get when they're in our system, that is, I get that whole thing. But what we're doing is we are releasing students to go do whatever. We're setting you up for success, and whatever you choose to do with your life, make it awesome, screw it up, doesn't matter.
Help me understand, because I thought you were, I thought you were really fighting for our, but you wanted each at the top. Did I misunderstand?
No, no.
So you want the our for everything?
No.
What are you wanting?
Can you help me understand what you want?
I said our graduates will. So for me, it's just.
Oh, at the very beginning.
So our graduate, our.
I'm not going back and forth, every each.
Oh, got it, okay.
No, I'm saying, as, as we're walking through this, yeah, every or each, that, that's for me is indifferent.
So it's our students will graduate with academic knowledge?
Our students will graduate with academic knowledge.
I think there, I think that's doable, it's just down here, that you actually can help me to make it happen when you, the board is signaling that you want us to focus on each.
That's okay, I'm good with that one.
That's a big deal to me, yeah, okay.
And I get it, like every student, absolutely, it gets personalized, we don't have to, I'm just, I'm just.
No, no, I think it just, I mean, I'm good with that one. I was going down low, I'm fine with that.
And I'm looking at the other one, so again, it's what you heard I said when I thought I said something.
So Cassie, do you get it?
She's totally confused.
The global end, but our students will graduate, and then every stays the same under the sub in.
No, each.
Oh, oh, each.
It's each.
We're going to change every to each.
I'm going to jump into the fire with one last piece.
And then you talked about some students, there was some typos, dignity and respect.
So take key out of sub, and dignity goes with respect, and take the S off of students and free as well.
And then the question that Cassie just asked is about the frequency.
Frequency is yearly and monitoring is yearly.
Annually, we said annually, and the monitoring is annually.
Okay.
Until further noticed.
Annually.
And then question, do we see the annual policy review being done when we are monitoring the report? Or do you guys see that monitoring happening at, in August? Kind of like we take all four and?
At the retreat, so I think it is, it's the retreat.
This is more just for practicality, so it's just.
Right, so it's setting up, we've gone through, so it's, it's August, annually in August.
Yes. The only comma going away was this one up here.
And the others were just annually based on what the schedule says.
So Cassie.
And I don't know if that's to be specified, but that's for me.
No, I think it's good, it is.
It's just somebody needs to understand that when it happens.
I think it's helpful to do that, so you started, so we would say for the ends, August, annually in August.
For both?
I mean, it's appropriate, the board can change.
They can modify it any time, they can modify it.
And that would be an appropriate time to do it, to monitor it.
Right, it would be the best time. You're looking at data, you're making changes, you're moving.
No, it's just for the regular board policy review, the monitoring is just annually, and we wouldn't be able to monitor them in August.
And let's go back to the ELs and also do the ELs on August of the year, with the policy review.
So the annual, he's basically naming the annual month to be August, for ELs and for ends.
Yeah. We might as well, that's really when you want to fix things along, I mean, get them ready, yeah.
So I have one last thing, and I know this is, there's a lot of stuff that goes around this, but the 21st century skills, to me, it's now redundant to say global society, so I'd like to consider that the statements say, our student graduates with academic knowledge and 21st century skills, ready to succeed as a responsible citizen, period.
What we talked about doing was taking the information that came out of the Global Initiative Group, the definition, the values, as well as their cycle of inquiry, and include that in the strategic planning piece to be considered with, you know, all the other information so that that group also understands that we haven't lost the concept, and really, the 21st century skills as they're listed are the global skills that they came up with, if you look at that cycle. It would be redundant, and so, for me, you know, as long as, those are the important skills, and we have the cycle that goes along with it, and I know with the staff that were in the room, that was the most important piece to them, was how they can take that and use that in their classrooms every day. So I think if we can lift that and have that.
Integrate that into forums during the strategic plan.
Yeah, just have that introduced, or at least even invite some of those members to be able to speak on, you know, because they had some really great conversations. And they'll be there to, I mean, I'm assuming that some will be there to give input. But anyway, so, again, I just think if we have folks that question or wonder, we also have to be ready to articulate, you know, if something looks like it went away, did it? And if it didn't, where is it? And, you know, how is it living? And it may live differently.
And it's still much, thank you.
I think 20th century skills, that really speaks, that's, to have those is having a global perspective, so that's, and that's redundant, and that's why we do that, so I think that would be, I think it cleans it up. I think, like Jeffrey said, it's a, we want it as clean and concise as we can, so yeah, I take off that last.
Yes.
Part and make it as simple and, and on citizen. And, yeah.
So can you read it one more time, what you think it's going to read now?
Our student graduates, our students, right?
Will graduate.
Will graduate with the academic knowledge and 21st century skills, ready to succeed as a responsible citizen, period. Period, take the comma out.
Okay, got it. So can we go over one more time, just to be sure we got all the changes? Because, so we took out key on sub in 2, right?
Correct.
We're adding each to each of the sub ends, right? We took the S off of students on sub in 3. We transpose dignity and respect on sub in 3. Took out global society in the mega. We took as a responsible, so no comma behind responsible, the period comes after citizen.
Right.
And it's our students will graduate with the.
Okay.
And then you've got the annually August for the board policy review, and then annually for the frequency for the monitoring.
That's pretty doggone smooth there.
Are you happy?
Yeah, it's a lot of work that went through.
Stylize the good password.
That's, I appreciate the support, because that clarity will really allow the interpretation, you'll see that interpretation to be much more clean, so I really appreciate that.
For me, and as we're talking about one more.
I've turned it back on, just to capture this, this is the one.
I'm, I'm kind of wondering if sub in 2 shouldn't be 1, and I think those statistics are going to come out first, and you really should look at what the achievement is before we look at the graduation, right? So it's always been kind of backwards to me, and I think if we pick anything to really look at twice possibly, will be data, and so that would be that first one, so that's the only other small change and tweak I would make, is that we change.
And again, these weren't in priority order, but the ultimate was graduation, so when they were.
Oh, I.
That was their ultimate, but we now have a mega ourselves, which is.
Above that.
Above that, and so, then, then the priority doesn't, you know, again, as I was talking, that's why we have ready, achieved, succeeded, because we have a mega, but, you know, we can do that.
And I'm okay to leave until we have the strategic plan, too.
But that's kind of where that, that's where that came from.
I'll keep it the way it is.
Thank you.
But I, I understand what you're talking about and that, but the part that I go back to.
Go back.
Why do I shoot myself with a bullet? Is, do for the goal, the mega, what do I call it, mega, it's just so.
Overarching.
The over, the mega end.
No, it's our vision.